Tonight by administering the oath of office to the newly elected board members. This will be done by our Board Secretary, the Treasurer, Mrs. Amy Hendricks. If you would, go ahead, Amy.
Okay.
Take it from here.
Alrighty. If I can have all of the newly elected or re-elected board members join me? Here? Let's see. This will do it. People, raise your right hand. And after I conclude reading the oath, if you can respond with "I will," you'll be all in good shape to go. I do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of school board member of the Vermillion Local District to which I have been elected.
I do.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, everyone.
Congratulations, guys. As we have discussed, before we begin the organizational meeting, we need to nominate, appoint a president pro tem for running the organizational meeting.
I'll nominate Sid Jordan.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Could I have a motion that nominations be closed?
Second.
Mr. Reeney and Mr. Dawson? All those in favor, please signify. Oh, that's my other board meeting. Mr. Reeney?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I would like to call the meeting to order, the organizational meeting of today, of Monday, January 9th, 2012, of the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
And Mr. Reeney?
Here.
Okay. Let's all stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the election of officers for this calendar year on the board, and we will start with nominations for President.
I'll nominate Sid Jordan.
Are there any other nominations?
I move nominations be closed.
Second.
Mrs. Hendricks, is there a technicality that we have to state it three times?
I think there is.
Are there any other nominations? To the best of your knowledge, does that count as three times? That's our knowledge. Okay.
Move that be closed.
Second.
But we already had, Tim had.
We didn't know if that counted.
It did. It did.
Because we kind of reopened it there. Re-asking.
Okay. Alrighty. Mr. Reeney?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next are nominations for Vice President, and I would like to nominate Dale Dawson.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? And one last time, are there any other nominations for Vice President?
I move that nominations be closed.
I'll second.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Reeney?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay. Onto our business. Item F in the organizational meeting, standing resolutions, recommend a resolution to approve the following standing resolutions for 2011.
Twelve.
This is for 2012. It's a mistake on our agenda.
It says 2012.
Says 11 on mine. Says 11 on mine. I'm mis-handing this.
Okay. The proper is 2012, and let me read them off. To establish the second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM for the day and time of regular meetings in 2012. I will not read every date, but it does check out as the second Monday of each month. Item B, designate the Vermillion Photo Journal as the official newspaper. C, direct the treasurer to provide copies of the minutes of the last meeting three days prior to the next regular meeting and to waive the reading of the minutes if set or done. D, authorize the treasurer to pay on abstracts and invoices, monthly salaries and bills within the approved appropriations, request from the Erie and Loraine County auditors advances on tax settlements as monies are collected, invest the funds of the district as they are available, establish funds as necessary when requested by law or auditor of state, open and read bids immediately after the time for filing and bids have expired. E, authorize the superintendent or his designee to act as the purchasing agent, act as the federal programs coordinator, act as compliance officer for the Equal Educational Opportunities Act, Title IX and 1972 Civil Rights Act, Family and Medical Leave Act, Bureau of Workers' Compensation, Public Employment Risk Reduction Program, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Americans with Disabilities Act. Next, approve student activity funds, purpose statements, and budgets. Act as 504 coordinator. Approve the emergency and temporary employment of personnel. Provide coordination of required asbestos inspections. Act as safety coordinator. Approve the use of school buses within state and local rules. Approve the use of a volunteer and/or employee's personal automobile to transport students to or from school or school-sponsored activities. F, authorize the building principals to sign contracts such as student activity contracts, student pictures, school annuals, athletic contests, and the like. G, appoint the superintendent or his designee as the Board of Education's hearing officer for appeals of suspensions and expulsions of students. H, authorize the appointment of the board's representative to act as a designee for the Board of Education to hear student expulsion appeals. I, establish a service fund in the amount allowed by law of $3,500 for the Board of Education within the general fund for the remainder of the fiscal year 2011 and for the fiscal year of 2012. Appoint Amy Hendricks to serve on the Vermillion City Parks and Recreation Board for 2011. And item K has a blank, and this is to appoint a representative, one of the five board members, to serve as legislative liaison with the House School Boards Association for 2012. Mr. Rice has already in advance offered to do this. If no one else has a desire to serve in that position?
I actually had talked to Tim about this today, and Tim sounded like it's something he would like to do. And if it's something...
I would like to do it, but...
Yeah. I talked to him earlier, but you and I had talked later, and so I would like to nominate Tim for this.
Okay. And you'll accept the position?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Item L, appoint a representative to serve as student achievement liaison with the House School Boards Association for 2012. This one, in previous conversation, Mrs. Ennis has agreed to serve in this capacity, and if that's concurs with everybody else, we will, and you agree to accept it?
Yes.
We'll put your name in at that point.
Congratulations.
And M, authorize the participation in state and federal programs as they become available. I'll so move.
I'll second.
Any other questions, discussion about the standing resolutions? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Reeney?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That completes the organizational meeting, and so I will move that we adjourn the organizational meeting. Please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Reeney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay. We're going to take a few-minute break.
Just fill right here. Right here.
Six fifty-eight?
Just walk in.
Six fifty-eight.
Fill in. Okay. I think we're ready to go. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the regular meeting of January 9th, 2012, of the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education. Mrs. Hendricks, please call the roll.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
And Mr. Reeney?
Here.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, and it will be led by the students from Vermillion Elementary School who were citizens of the month, and they were recognized for citizenship and caring this month. And I'm going to go over, have them introduce themselves, and then they're going to lead us in the pledge. They've lined themselves up in some kind of order?
My name's Ben Reeney, grade two, and my teacher's Miss Fritz.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
A professional football player.
Right. Hopefully for the Browns.
My name is Gabriel, and I am in third grade. My teacher is Miss Ling.
My name is Landon, and I'm in Mrs. Greg's class, and I want to be a fireman and a mailman when I grow up.
Hi. My name is Faith Humphrey. I'm in second grade, and my teacher is Mrs. Hallers.
My name is Lilian. I want to be a doctor when I grow up.
My name's Haley, and I... Mrs. Looks, and I'm in first grade, and I want to be an artist when I grow up.
My name is Molly Wade. I'm in second grade, Mrs. Lee's class, and I want to be a doctor.
My name is Madison, and I'm in Mrs. McAvine's class, grade one, and I want to be a singer when I grow up.
My name's Alexis. I'm in third grade, and I'm in Mr. Olson's class.
My name is Olivia Prey. I am in third grade. My teacher's Miss Call. I want to be a veterinarian when I grow up.
My name's Ashley. I'm in third grade. My teacher's Miss Annable, and I want to be a teacher when I grow up.
My name's Kayla Bartabull, and I'm in first grade. My teacher's Mr. Malier, and I want to be an artist when I grow up.
Okay. Now, you guys are going to step up here and lead us in the pledge, even though everybody there might think we already did it once. This is a different meeting. Ben, you've got it. Start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very good, guys. Very good. That was a big group vibe. First job. Great job. Great job. Great. Picture your name again.
Good job. Good job. Congratulations, guys.
Thank all these guys. Very good. Good job. Thank you. Yeah, right. We'll watch the rest on TV.
I know.
What? Football game's eight thirty. Eight thirty. Yeah. Okay. Moving on. Item five on our agenda, student liaison update. We left this on, not certain at the printing, but to the best of my knowledge in previous conversation, we will not have a student liaison report today?
We do.
We do have it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Rice is going to...
That's pretty quick. Five minutes.
This evening, we actually have a teacher that's here to talk about how technology is being used in our classrooms. The technology, we call it the flipped classrooms. And Mrs. Burskins has been a teacher in our district for seven years, and she currently teaches sixth grade math and science. And she's actually one of our technology innovators, as well as a honey trainer, brain honey trainer. So, with that being said, I'd like to introduce you and welcome you to our meeting.
Thank you.
Hello. What I want to do is just give you a quick look at what the flipped classroom is. It's something kind of new in this area, but it's been used out west a little bit more. And I'll just go through a quick, hopefully it'll be quick. I can talk too much sometimes. Flipped classroom. Traditional classroom is the teachers at...
Turn those on. Turn the other ones off.
Of course. The traditional classroom has the teacher usually lecturing at the students or to the students, depending on the teacher, and the students are copying notes from the board or doing worksheets or something like that. And they take the work home to complete it. And I know in sixth grade, for math especially, that's kind of a general rule. We teach them, we spend most of the time, period, teaching them, and then they take the homework home. They get there, they either forget how to do it, or they weren't paying attention to begin with, or they may have, you know, we thought they were writing notes down and they were doing something else. There's a lot of different reasons why they would have trouble, or they just didn't understand it. What I wanted to do, last year, I kept thinking, there's got to be a better way. I didn't feel like my students were doing well enough in math, so I thought, there's got to be a better way for me to use the technology in my classroom. So, I thought about what I wanted. I want the students engaged in what they're learning, not just sitting there staring at me. I wanted them to understand what they were learning, and I wanted to be able to help them if they didn't understand. I can't go home with them, but sometimes I feel like I need to. So, how can I help them with the work that they were doing at home, here at school? In the past, we had done longer math classes, and that helped a little bit, but due to scheduling, it wasn't possible to keep it that way, so we had to come up with something else. And when I started looking around to see what else I could do, I came up with the flipped classroom. The flipped classroom was something that began in a Colorado school with two science teachers out there. They had absent students that couldn't get the work done, or they were not getting the lectures, they were not getting what they needed in class, so they went ahead, and they saw this technology for movie making, and they decided they would videotape their lectures. And they would put them online, or they'd put them somewhere on DVD, something that they could get their students, and their students would be able to watch these videos and still get the lectures, instead of coming back and saying, "I can stay next Tuesday and catch up on this that I missed." This way, the students could see it immediately, they could stay up to date, no matter what. This was great for the students that were absent, but then they noticed a trend, that the students that were there started watching these videos also. The students were watching them for review, they were watching them to get ready for tests, the students were asking for more videos. So, they decided to try flipping the classroom, and that's kind of where it originated. And that's pretty much what I'm doing. Or... That's weird. There we go. With my sixth grade math class. I tried to figure out a way that I could help them more. So, the whole idea is to have the students watch videos and take notes at home, and they're doing a lot of different things there. It's like they're taking the notes, they're watching my videos, they're writing things down. Where normally, when I would be up there and I was showing them how to do problems, and they're trying to hurry up and write it down, they can stop the video, they can pause it, they can finish writing it down. If they miss something, they can stop it, they can back it up, they can look at it again. They can basically take a remote, and everyone wants a remote for their teacher so they can back us up. Well, now they can. They can back it up, and they can look at it again, they can finish their notes, they come in the next day, and when they come in, we go over what they had looked at that evening, they can ask any questions they have. Usually, it takes only about five minutes of my time to reteach them. They have the concepts down because I've already taught it to them. Then we can sit down, and we can spend the class time doing other things. This allows them to absorb the material a little bit before they get there, so when I'm talking to them, they know what I'm talking about, kind of a preparation for them. It makes them more comfortable when they're talking about the material, when they're talking to each other, because they feel like they know what they're talking about, and it gives me more time in class to work one-on-one with the students. So, when the students come in, they have more time to do the work that used to be homework, and I can sit there and I can help them. I walk around and I can explain to them while they're doing their homework. It's like taking your teacher home with you. And I can explain to them what they're doing wrong. Biggest thing was how to present the material. I spent a lot of time this summer teaching brain honey to myself, a lot of time, and trying to figure out how to use it. Using the school website, there's a lot of different ways that you can present this as a teacher, using the school website, using SchoolTube, which is what I use, TeacherTube. I do use our brain honey system, and I'll show you real quick what I do with that for the students that don't have computer access at home as far as the internet. For brain honey, I can give it to them on a USB drive, or I can make a DVD for them, and they can take that home. They all have computers, or they take their laptops home, even if they don't have internet. So, presenting the material is actually pretty easy. I'm going backwards here. Sorry. It wants to take me the other way. Some of the material that we get, there's a lot of places to get it. I do do videos of myself, and the videos that I do of myself are not like me, all of me, because they see enough of me, they don't want to see me at home, too. But what I do is, I have a document camera that takes video, and I'll sit down, just as if I was doing it on the board. I'll sit down, and I'll write out problems, and I'll talk them through them, and I'll show you one of those in just a minute. I also use my smartboard, where they see it being written on the smartboard, and I have a headset and a microphone that I talk into, and it keeps the sound steady for them by doing that. They prefer the document camera ones to the smartboard, because they said the smartboard takes a little bit longer to catch up with my talking, but just a couple different ways to do it. We use, I don't use the Khan Academy, but I know that there are some places, like at the high school, some people are using some stuff from it. There are videos on SchoolTube, YouTube, TeacherTube. Teachers don't have to do these themselves, they can go ahead and get the videos from somewhere else. I just prefer to do them myself because I know how I want to teach them. There's also, our textbook has videos for every single lesson in our math textbook. There are two or three videos that, tutorial videos for the students that they can watch, so I can put some of those in there, too. They can also do screenshots. Sometimes I'll just do screenshots of problems, and I'll record over it. And I also put games, and I put educational sites under that they can go to. And it really surprises me when students come running in in the morning, and they go, "I love that math homework that you gave us last night. I played, you know, decimal puppies for an hour and forty minutes." And you're thinking, "Great, they just had to play decimals for an hour and forty minutes." I can't get them to do ten problems on a piece of paper, but I can get them to do it that way. So, it's worked out real well for my sixth graders this year. I'm going to step out of there for a minute. Teachers don't have to do these themselves, they can go ahead and get the videos from somewhere else. I just prefer to do them myself because I know how I want to teach them. There's also, our textbook has videos for every single lesson in our math textbook. There are two or three videos that, tutorial videos for the students that they can watch. So I can put some of those in there too. They can also do screenshots, sometimes I'll just do screenshots of problems and I'll record over it. And I also put games, and I put educational sites under that they can go to. And it really surprises me when students come running in in the morning and they go, "I love that math homework that you gave us last night. I played, you know, decimal puppies for an hour and forty minutes." And you're thinking, "Great, they just had to play decimals for an hour and forty minutes." I can't get them to do ten problems on a piece of paper, but I can get them to do it that way. So it's worked out real well for my sixth graders this year. I'm gonna step out of there for a minute. And bring up brain honey, because this is what the students typically see when they go into. I call my lessons that are on brain honey ahas, at-home assignments. And the students know anything that's an aha is something they have to do, and they know, they keep track of what lesson we're on. This is a typical aha. It has different, I tell them what pages to look at in their book, they review those. They watch my video, which will take them to a SchoolTube video that I've put up. And they sit down and, and I won't subject you to that, but the video will explain everything that we did in that lesson. So I'm still teaching them, but I'm teaching them at home. Okay? Then they come down and they look at some of the things that, the examples that we've done. We go through, there are videos that our textbook has, and I, sometimes I'll throw one of those on or two of those. Sometimes, like, don't put me, Mrs. Renshaw, they find her amusing. Now, let's evaluate an expression, this time let's use decimals. Remembering our rule for when we point off. The expression is four X. What we're asked to do is to evaluate four X if X is equal to six and seventy-three thousandths. What we simply do is remember, four X means four times... The videos take anywhere from two to three minutes, so not very long, just enough to get their attention, and they write down the problems. More examples here. Then they have things, cartoons, study jams for math and science, where they go in and it gives them some step-by-step... Problem solving, things that they can do. So this whole time, I'm giving them ways that they can do this without thinking that it's math homework. And then I always give them math games that they can do. So there's, each one is a little bit different, like I said, it'll give them different types of problems. Some of them are more interactive games. But by doing, this is their homework, and this is what they like to do at home. Then when they come in the next day, we sit down, and it may be a worksheet, it may be group work. But I can walk around while they're working on that, and I can say, "We just did some fractions, dividing fractions." And as I'm walking around, watching them do what used to be homework, I can say, you know, so-and-so is not doing the reciprocal correctly. They're doing the reciprocal, they're flipping the first fraction instead of the second one. I catch what's wrong immediately, and I'm able to help them before they build these bad habits, or before they completely give up that night. So it really helps, and I've noticed that their grades have really jumped with this. Well, for me, I think jumped. Come back up. Their grades have gone, my math class last year, this time, averaged with seventy-two percent, this year it's eighty-three percent. So it's really gone up. And I think it's because I spent more time with them, more one-on-one time. What am I doing in the classroom? I'm not really teaching like we used to. So there's more time working on, like when the students are working on that homework, I'm helping them. I have students who say, "Okay, I understand." The majority of them will be working on something, and a few of them will say, "I still don't understand." I can take them in small group. And as they understand, they leave and they go off and they do what they need to. I may be standing there with one student, but that student is getting one-on-one time with me, which is really helping them. It's giving me more time for hands-on learning, more manipulatives. The students are starting to make videos of themselves teaching. This was a big thing when the new school year started, that we talked about, we wanted to do. I wanted them to start making some videos, I told them they were gonna start teaching me, and they're really excited about that. They started out with, when we come back into the classroom and we do a couple of practice problems, whoever gets them right raises their hand. Well, when they raise their hand, I check it if it's right, then they jump up and they're allowed to go help somebody else. So while they're running around helping other people, "Yes, you got it right, no, you didn't, but let's see what you did wrong." So they're teaching at the same time, and they're really excited about that. That one surprises me the most. It gives our special education teachers a little bit more time for them to work with some of the students. If I have students that have been absent, I can have the teacher pull them out. They're not missing my lecture because they watched it the night before, or they can watch it that night. So they're not missing that either. So a lot of collaborative learning and a lot of extra learning going on. Students are very engaged now. I'm amazed at, you could drop a pen in my room when they start working. It's shocking. We're doing some different assessments for volume. They had to do three pictures of themselves. In the first one, measuring volume of a regular object, and then they had to explain what they did with their measurements. The second three pictures, they had to do volume of an irregular object, and they had to explain it. So we're looking at different ways to assess that too. And they're enjoying it. They're making videos, this is a science one. Actually, this is one that we did last year, and with my science, I did not flip my science classes, but we're doing small units that I'm flipping, instead of the whole year, taking on the whole year. And this is one of the ones that we're gonna be flipping this year. They spent a lot of time preparing for this, making these videos and doing chemical and physical changes. This year, a lot of that is gonna be done at home, and they'll do the videos then, in the classroom, where they have the green screen and things like that. More things available to them. That's kind of what it is. Like I said, it's, my student averages have gone up, test grades have gone up, homework's getting turned in regularly. I'm not saying that every single homework assignment gets turned in, because I don't know if that's ever gonna happen. But they do it, because they're doing it in class, most of them get it done before they ever leave. So that, that part of it is getting done. I don't get the complaints I used to. When the school year started, I made it imperative that I talk to the parents to try and explain to them what I was doing in the classroom, because it was so different. And I didn't want anybody going, "What the heck is she thinking?" So at open house, I explained what I was doing with the flipped classroom. And I explained to them that their students were not gonna be bringing math homework home every night, the traditional homework that they were used to, that they were gonna be doing that with me. Some of them looked very relieved. You know, when it comes to indirect measurements and ratios, they're like, "I don't have a clue." Last year, I had a couple of parents that came in for tutoring after school with their kids. So this year, I don't have that, they're getting it. So just a different way of approaching it, and a different way that it seems to be working for us. Any questions?
How many other classrooms are doing this? I knew that your classroom was.
It's far, right now, only mine. It was something, yeah, it was something that I was determined to try this year. But I spent a good part of my summer getting ready for it, and it's constant, it's constant work. Once it's all set up, like next year will be easier because I'll just be tweaking things. But it's a lot of work this year making the videos. You have to make the video, you have to turn it into an M4V, and then you have to put it on at SchoolTube. You have to upload it to SchoolTube, and then I have to attach it to brain honey, and it's a lot of work.
So for those kids that can't get online later, you basically are using Camtasia, I notice?
I am not using Camtasia, but that's one of the things that you can use, that a lot of people that are doing the flipped classroom use. What I'm doing, I don't have any right now that don't have internet at home, but I can put it, I can put the videos on USB drive or on DVD, and they can watch them in their computers. I don't have any at the moment that don't, that have that though. And I do have one that their internet was down for a while, and he was watching them at school. He was staying there watching.
How much time does a student spend at home watching the lesson?
Depends on the lesson, but it's probably, it could be anywhere from twenty minutes to, some of the harder ones, maybe thirty minutes. But not like they used to, where they would struggle with the math homework.
Is that every night they do that, or...
Pretty much. There are times, there are some things that are really difficult for them that I want to teach them in my classroom. And so I'll tell them, "You don't have an aha tonight." And they're happy about that, they're always happy when they don't have anything to do. But it seems to work out real well.
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm thrilled when I heard this, you were doing this this year. Just because in concept, it's something that we talked about with former superintendent a number of years ago. And now we have that technology and the tools, and your motivation to make it work, this is great.
It's a lot of work, and I don't see everybody doing it, because it's a lot of work to get started. But you don't have to do it all at once, that's a nice thing, you can do one or two. You know, do a part of a unit, do some of it that way, and build on it.
I think that you mentioned it too, Khan Academy has a lot of materials that are made for teachers. So that, and I think that as we progress with this, they'll be able to choose materials that are already ready-made for them. There are some materials on brain honey, I believe as well.
Yes.
That are also accessible.
They're more for the older students, as opposed to the younger, like the middle school. The Khan Academy stuff is nice, but it's more geared towards the high school students, or like algebra and all. There is some other stuff on there, but they'll start into something, and I started out watching those. And they would, they would get into something, and then they would get way beyond what my students were doing. So I didn't use it. But I know, my husband has started doing this, he teaches physics and chemistry. And for Christmas, he got a document camera, he wanted a document camera, and he's starting his own videos. And he's gonna put his notes, and he's using the videos from Khan Academy, so. A lot of different ways.
Camtasia software is a great way of integrating a lot of different things into one.
It is, I hear it's fantastic, I don't know, I mean, I haven't used it, but I know a lot of the people that are on the flipped network, that, the website that I had up, the podcasting dot name, N-I-N-G dot com, is nothing but flipped. All of these teachers talking about flipped classrooms across the world. And a lot of them use the Camtasia, but I'm not familiar with it.
It's a software product that basically takes everything, I'm using all the time, I got it both back to MPC. So a lot of your different videos, everything integrating, you know, still...
Mix them together.
Exactly, with your voiceover and...
And that's nice.
Yeah.
Because there have been times when I was learning how to use the hover cam that I had, that I would do something, and then I would mess it up, or somebody would be in the background, and I would go back and do the whole thing over, because I had spent all this time trying to figure out this thing, and it's like, forget it, I'll just do it over.
I'll share it with you, maybe stop by your class sometime.
Okay.
We appreciate the time and effort you've put into this, because we know, and I think you've seen it too, that your colleagues are starting to look at what you're doing, and I think that the word starts to spread, and they're talking about how useful it can be. We are requiring, as you know, the teachers to become trained in brain honey, and we're asking them to create courses just like yours. And we knew it took a lot of work for you, and we do appreciate the time that you're spending with them to show them what to do. And I know it's more prevalent up at the high school now, but I believe that it's gonna spread down through the elementary as well, so.
And the middle school, they're using it more and more. I'm surprised, there are people that I thought would never touch it that are coming up and saying, "Hey, I tried this." Explain it to me again, so.
Right. Great job.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item six, committee reports discussion items.
Mr. Pemben added a couple of them here, the memorabilia committee. That was a task force that's been created, and it's the drug task force. Are we prepared to talk about any of those tonight? We said maybe.
I just want to say at this time that we met in the drug task force committee today. And instead of me talking to the board, I prefer that we have a member of the committee come after we've met once again. We've got another meeting set up here in about ten days again. We're doing some extensive work in that committee, and I think that in order, rather than me tell you what's happening, I'd rather from one of the committee members to come and talk to you about that. And same thing with the sports memorabilia. There is progress being made towards that, but I think that it would be better that one of those committee members actually shows the board at the next meeting what's exactly happening with those things. So I'm just going to say that that's where, that we are progressing at this point, and I'm very pleased with what both of those committees are doing. And I think that you'll see great progress at the next board meeting, and they'll actually be able to report out.
Okay. There's an item here under committee reports discussion items. Discussion item is the concept of a board retreat slash workshop. Mrs. Hendricks and I were at a dialogue evening of board officers that was sponsored by North Point, the Educational Service Center. And at that meeting, there were numerous boards who stated that every single year in January, after a new election of officers, that they would have a board retreat workshop, that they would bring in a facilitator. And it was mainly to assist the new board member in an indoctrination into board business. But it would also serve as the beginning of everybody in the same room talking about the board issues that every school board experiences. I asked Phil to put this on the agenda just because I wanted to throw it out there. I thought it was a great idea. I thought we really should do that. Mrs. Innis is our new board member, and although she has spent a couple of years with the Ohio Improvement Process and has seen the inner workings from that end, but board business and how we communicate is different. So I'm throwing it out there for discussion. Anybody here has thoughts about that?
I like the idea. I mean, we've had, I don't know, many, four or five, maybe more, since I've been on the board, and they've all been good. I mean, it gets, it's great for team building, I think, you know, I mean, it just helps us to get to know each other and what our views are about different things, and it just, I think it's worthwhile. I know it costs a little bit of money to invite a moderator from the OSBA, but I think that's the best way that I've seen it done. And it's good to get their views too.
I agree with you.
I did a little bit of research, in addition to the research that Mrs. Hendricks did. She did the call to OSBA for us and looked up what that current cost is. For doing a session facilitated by OSBA in a similar fashion that we've done many times in the past, that cost is in the eight hundred to eight hundred and seventy-five dollar range, to have that facilitator in. There's another tact that we can take, and that is through our membership with North Point, we get ten hours of free time through a structure that they have. And one of their representing firms, the firm that was at the dinner that we attended, McGowan and Markling. I've been to a number of presentations where Matt Markling was there, that particular evening Susan McGowan was there. They are the law firm that has a relationship with North Point. And they could come in and do this, and it would all be free, from the standpoint of...
Like free?
But, but let me add to this...
My only point was that the moderator is good, I mean, I'm not saying it has to be from OSBA.
And Matt has been a school board member at Westlake for a number of years. Lakewood, I'm sorry, yes.
For quite a few years, and he's not, he just ended his many years...
What does that take away from, I mean, those ten hours, how we used those in the past?
We have had them do some special education in services before that type of thing, but there would still probably be money, hours left.
Let me add one last thing, I talked with Matt Markling today about this very concept. He lengthy explained all the different types of workshops that they do. There's one that would be a minimum of a ten-hour session. Normally, they would charge five thousand dollars for that. My initial reaction was, "I don't think we want to do a ten-hour session." But let me just throw out, let me just throw out, that he said, without me explaining the details of how he did it, he said, "I would do that one gratis for your board." And normally, they charge a lot of money for that, a lot of money as in five thousand dollars. But that coupled with, so, bottom line is, we can, through North Point, have McGowan and Markling come in, and we can structure it however we want. have, uh, McGowan and Markling come in and we can structure it however we want. Um, but.
Let's have him pick the most important two or three hours out of the ten.
Well, I, he, he really explained that he spends a lot of time surveying the group, a lot of dialogue. Everybody completes lengthy survey forms, but in the same breath he told me that of all the boards he ever did it with, it results in every board talking about the same three issues. So in a way I said, well, we don't have to go through all that. Let's get right on to the same three issues 'cause we probably are no different than any other board in that regard. Um, and so we could do that. Uh, he would.
The only thing is, you know, integration may be a technology piece, something we need to look at, you know, as a board. That would be the only piece that I would like to, would not be the same for other schools, you know? If there's something on technology that we would be thinking about.
Okay.
Legislation-wise, little things that are, you know, we've had some issues.
Here is, here is my thought and that is.
Yeah.
When we get to the end of our meeting today and we're reviewing future board meeting dates, at that point in time, I would suggest we look at the date to set aside for this. Once we agree we're gonna do it on that date, then I would initiate the communication to North Point and to, uh, McGowan and Markling. I would request them to send an email to each one of us. We then can respond with, what are the things we want to see them talk about? And they'll structure it from all of the individual responses.
Before I completely poo-poo the whole ten-hour thing, h- how would he structure it? I mean, would it be one hour, I do stuff myself? Is it, I mean, how, just, how would it happen unfold?
Honestly, he said this was a ten-hour process. I didn't reply to him other than to think. I know the board makeup, we're not gonna do ten hours. That was my thought. We're not gonna do ten hours. This is, this is, this is a four or five hour thing on a Saturday morning. That's what I thought.
Okay.
And I thought that would be effective for what we heard other people at our last board get-together with the North Point group. Uh, I think that would suffice. Uh, I, I would say it starts with, uh, that review of board roles and responsibilities that we've all sat through presentations, but, uh, Mrs. Innes has not and, and she would see and hear that from another perspective, this particular attorney, uh, and I could conceive that as being thirty minutes to forty-five minutes. Uh, and then we move into those main topics that he says, every board talks, every board says these are issues. And then we would, we would delve into that in conversation with him, uh, from our own perspective to work it through. So that, nothing more than we as a group of five know where everybody else is coming from on it. Uh, but I don't, Dave, I don't see it as a ten-hour, uh, session myself.
See how structured?
Yeah, just like talk structure. What, what would be that ten-hour agenda?
I could answer that in this way, that it would be four or five hours, not ten hours. So. Uh, but I guess if everyone's in concurrence and concept, then when we get to the end of the meeting, we'll set the date and then we'll have the structure come from individual communication back to, uh, the law firm.
Yeah, because if, honestly, if the ten hours would really help, I'm willing to commit to it. Uh, because at the end of the day, we're not paid by the hour here. So, you know, whatever's gonna make sense for this board, we're, we're together as a group for the next two years for sure, so.
And that's how we always did it. We created the agenda by emailing and back and forth and then we had an agenda and then we did it.
Sure.
Let me add one final thing to this. I've, I've seen at least three presentations in six years by Matt Markling and I really was impressed with his presentation, was impressed even more having individual one-on-one dialogue at the end of those evenings. Uh, and then I met the partner Susan McGowan at this recent one. Uh, and the point being, we have relationships with law firms through the years and even though this would serve the purpose of board workshop, it would also serve as, we're interviewing a, a potential new.
Yeah.
Law firm. So, that, that, that was my thought process. And, and to go back to the beginning, it's free.
Good work. I like it. I mean, I really am all for it. So, how are you thinking you do it?
Okay. Well, we will, we will just set the date later and then we will handle communication from there. To the law. Okay. Um, there is not another item listed under discussion items, but, but I see a couple individuals here in the audience tonight that I didn't see where they were on the agenda. Is that, was your thought that that was going to be a, um, public participation or?
Public participation, yes.
Okay. 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 Does anybody else have anything under? Oh, I'm sorry. No, it was on there, on the addendum. I did not look back over to the other sheet. I thought it was all consented on.
There you go. I didn't know if you put that on there either, sorry.
Have to remember, I always have to look at the two, two agendas.
Yeah.
Mr. Pemben, that would be yours to introduce and have the update.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I've been running late today because of interviews, so I wasn't sure that Cindy put this addenda, addendum out. We've been meeting in our bond issue, uh, committee as well as our financial task force committee and once again, we have talked about the options and various possibilities of going back to the community with a bond issue. And this evening, I'd like for Dick Zangland to come up and address the board about the options again and have a discussion this evening about this possibility with the full board here. And I know that Ron Victor's here as well. I'm not sure if Ron's gonna wanna speak at all or not, but he is here. Uh, he's been working with the committee, so he's here to talk as well. So, Dick, thanks for coming. Thanks for putting your time in, on this and, uh, if you would let us know what you're.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dick. I'm in my sixtieth class. And when I grow up, I wanna be, build a new school building or something. Would you like copies of these now or afterwards? I'm simply gonna read a update for you. For, after your information. Okay, thank you. Members of the Vermillion's local school board. My name is Richard Zangland. I appreciate the opportunity to present this revised recommendation on behalf of the members of the District Facility Commission and the District Financial Task Force. Since the defeat of the Vermillion Local Schools' bond issue in November, members of the District Facilities Commission and the Financial Task Force, composed of volunteer members of the community, have dedicated many hours of review, preparation, attendance at meetings, intense questions and answers in order to present to the Board of Education a plan to move forward to improve the school's facilities. Working with the district's architect and other facility improvement professionals, the Facility Commission and the Financial Task Force pursued a more cost-effective way to provide for the improvements in the district's facilities in addition to funding a construction project with a bond issue. Implementing an energy savings project known as House Bill two sixty-four, the project can take advantage of energy savings in the renovations of Sailor Way Middle School and Vermillion High School as the buildings are converted to an elementary and a middle school. That's House Bill two sixty-four. The renovations would pay for themselves in energy savings over the next fifteen years. At the same time, the new school would be constructed adjacent to the current high school. Therefore, the cost of the original project would be reduced and consequently be less expensive for the residents to fund the project. In addition, the district should pursue the sale of existing facilities not needed for school purposes. These improvements in energy savings coupled with anticipated reduced operational expenditures provide for the best plan for the district. After reviewing, discussing, consensus building, we concluded that the best option is to move forward, work together with the Ohio School Facilities Commission, to revise the district's master plan and then seek approval from the community for this project in the November two thousand twelve general election. The recommendation of the District's Facilities Commission and the District Financial Task Force is to renovate and convert Vermillion High School to a middle school and renovate and add additional classroom space and convert Sailor Way Middle School to an elementary school and construct a new high school in addition to the cur-, as in addition to the current high school. Taking advantage of House Bill two sixty-four energy savings project for the current high school and middle school in conjunction with the construction of a new high school should be the highest priority for the Board of Education and the community. To successfully fund this project, the District Facility Commission and the Financial Task Force will continue to study all funding options and present the Board of Education with a final recommendation. Once the facility analysis is complete and a final funding plan can be presented to the superintendent and the Board of Education. We, the members of the District Facility Commission and the Financial Task Force, will work with the Board of Education, the teachers, the administration and the support staff and the City of Vermillion and School District, the residents to pass a necessary bond issue or alternative funding option to provide for the very best for our community, its students in the now and in the future. At this point, we are presenting this information to the Board of Education, keeping you informed of our prog- progress of work. We appreciate Mrs., Mr. Pemben, Mrs. Hendricks, the members of their staff and the individuals who've answered all our questions, provided information and contributed to our research and discussion. Sincerely, Richard Zangland. Any questions? I mean, this is just a summary of what we've been doing. We've met twice. Uh, we reviewed and critiqued our last election. We came to some pretty tough.
When you say facilities, you fancy a cell. Which facilities are you specifically talking about?
The first one probably I've recommended, 'cause I already have people coming to visit it next week or the next two weeks, is South Street School. So I've, uh, invited a senior housing developer experience from Columbus to come up and review it and look at it and see if we can convert that into a senior housing property, period. We think, you know, it has thirty-plus classrooms. Each one of those classrooms seem to divide very easily into two. There could possibly be sixty to one hundred apartments in that facility with recreation, with kitchens, be a great place to live. That would be the first one. After that, and after we get the elementary school moved over to your Sailor Way property, then we would begin the next step, which is that, if the parks board and the Y would entertain the possibility of moving to your elementary school, that could be your Y, your city recreation center, possibly a senior center and possibly even some emergency medical facilities.
What are your thoughts for this building we're in?
I think your, your charter school right now is temporarily, at least in the short run, best suited for that. And we even talked about expanding some of their programs to consider some other, uh, academic purposes that you could go to the marketplace with. Uh, even a plan B for South Street would be, you know, I think there's a market for that eighteen to twenty-seven-year-old that just simply didn't get the work done in their academic requirements. But then when Whit mother wisdom sprinkles over their head at the age of twenty-six, they realize they really are college material and it's still not too late to go back to school. I mean, I have plenty of friends that have PhDs and didn't start them until they were thirty-five to forty years old, thirty, you know, so. There's a market out there for future education. I think it's just postponed either after military service or failed marriage or, or some socioeconomic, uh, reason. Yes, sir.
Dick, the House Bill two sixty-four work, is, is there any work that could be done before the big building project goes on? Or is that all done in conjunction with new construction and renovation?
Uh, you know, I'm winging it when I answer this, but, uh, I think it could be done in anticipation. But I think the first thing you've gotta do is the survey to determine that and then it's gotta be part of an additional requirement of your project manager that you know so much about that would now be running two projects at once. And I assume that for efficiency reasons, they like to do them all at once. I mean, they've got construction crews there to do the demolition and it would just be two separate accounting packages.
Be a little bit more specific. I don't know if you guys, we've talked for a long time about wind, wind energy.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if that's something that could happen before you look at it.
We spent a lot, a lot of time working on that early, but, uh, unfortunately, I'm gonna be very blunt. It seemed like the, the cart before the horse. I mean, you know, we can always do that later. It was my opinion. I mean, you have to do your plan, execute it and get approval from your citizens before you can move with that. But I think it's something you have to go to.
Is that part of the new construction project?
Yes. Yeah.
Pretty easily.
Right. The next step is gonna be, we have a, a local citizen who's an expert in facilitating focus groups and she's gonna do five or six focus groups. Uh, we still have some money in the budget from the campaign and we'll use that as incentives to invite twenty, twenty-five citizens in various socioeconomic demographic segments to be facilitated and talked to and find out where we're at. You know, we're, these guys are working hard. They're trying to reduce thirty-three million. This energy, two sixty-four, could reduce it, I don't know, what, three to five, seven million dollars possibly? And then, then we're looking at two other alternative funding systems. So bear with us. Uh, discussions for you are, you know, get appraisals on your buildings. Give us permission to do something with those buildings. Give us time to go to the Board of Elections and say we wanna get on. The only other election options are for you to consider would be an August special election, which gets a little pricey. It's about ten to twenty million dollars, I understand, to get two different counties to run a special election.
Thousand, not million?
Twenty thousand. Yeah. So, if you just give me the twenty million, I'll go do the buildings. Any other questions?
What's our timeline as far as case number November ballot? Quick, quick, quick.
That would be in August.
What about the August ballot? I feel like it's something over, what are your reviews?
Uh, I believe that one's going to, that one would probably be mid-May.
Yeah, May or late April.
For that just ten, fifteen pounds to put in on the ballot, if there's multiple people, organizations that wanna go on the ballot, is that cost shared?
Yes, I would anticipate even with a couple other parties with, that would, might overlap in boundaries, we would be looking still.
That's what we'd be, okay. The, um, the concept, final point you made about focus groups, uh, and I've been in the loop with emails. I've seen where that seems to be going. Uh, have you thought further about the timeline?
I think she's ready to go. Um, she just finished, uh, Main Street's strategic plan and then we, the mayor had her do the city's, uh, group on Saturday, so they spent the whole day on a strategic planning session. And now she's, uh, ready to start recruiting with some help from the staff over there. So it should be in the next ten days, we should be.
And I know we're in communication, I have a, I think you know it right now, the, the idea of that August election or November election as it relates to, uh, voter perception and making sure that maybe in the focus group, there's a.
Yeah. Some discussion of that.
So, that would help us too.
Okay. Thank you.
I can thank you enough for the time and energy you're putting into this. You have no idea how grateful we are, because you just have put, I can't count the hours that you put into this.
Okay, thank you.
Not only this, but on South Street as well, so thank you for that.
Don't forget the five people at this table who worked for you. Just passing through. Thanks, Dave. Thanks.
Very delighted.
No, I think, just to reiterate, the groups have been working, the analysis is going to take place. I know the architect's working with the House Bill 264 person, and once that information is determined, this group will get, will look at that, analyze that, come to the board. And then one thing that's happening now, you know, from the November election, you have about five hundred votes possibly to turn, this gives us some time to work with the community, to build up, you know, the energy that's necessary for either an August or November election with something that looks very similar, but maybe even more implicit better for the community, and that's what I think the groups are looking at right now. So this was tonight to provide some information, just to kind of keep the board informed as to the direction we're going.
All great, Ron.
Okay. Well, we'll keep a space open on this section of the board meeting agenda for the reports after the focus groups.
Thanks.
Thank you again. The next item on the agenda, item seven, is public participation. Is there anyone here tonight who came to address the board? I see no one. Moving on, item eight, reports, starting with A, Treasurers Report of Mrs. Hendricks.
The December thirty-first financial statements are entered, replaces this evening. And our fiscal year, starting July first, December thirty-first, does mark the halfway point for us throughout, for the fiscal year. Overall, in all of our funds, we have received fifty-three percent of our revenue and spent fifty-three percent of our budget. We do remain on target. In our forecast comparison, I have now received the new tax rates and evaluations from the county auditors, and I will be revising the forecast to present at the February meeting to give a more complete update, now that we have some more of our information in place. But in comparison with our initial forecast that was done in the fall, our year-to-date revenue, we are below our estimate by a little over sixty-five thousand dollars. But considering we are looking at estimates of about eleven-point-two million dollars for this point in the year, that's really very close. No material variances in any of the categories that are noteworthy on a year-to-date basis. On our expenses, we are below budget at this point by just a little over one million dollars. That's out of an estimated eleven million dollars. And the majority of that is in the area of benefits and purchase services. The benefit area, I do now with the December closing, most staff changes that are going to happen as far as changing their benefit plans, what they're enrolled for, that type of thing, we estimate those starting the year, and December seems to be the benchmark of where most people, as they're making those kinds of adjustments for their family circumstances or employment circumstances, are making them to start January first. So now I should have some final numbers and be able to wrap up the year's estimate on those without, without quite as much guesswork in that area. In the area of purchase services, we are below budget by two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars. We have had the benefits of some lower utility rates this year than we had estimated that we would, which is great news. In addition to that, we have had some higher temperatures, and that's helped us as well. I don't want to jinx this by mentioning that, but that has, that has been good. In the month of December, you'll see that we have, for year-to-date, our textbooks and supplies, we are just under ten thousand dollars away from our estimate of three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars. And our capital outlay, we are right on the money with that. We had both of our new school buses delivered this month, as we had anticipated at this point in the year, so those should be getting inspected and on, on the road, so we're right on target there as well. So, year-to-date, at this point, based on our original estimates from the fall, we are running about a million dollars ahead of schedule, but we do have outstanding purchase orders of one-point-eight million dollars that are going to fall against that as well. But I'm feeling good about where we're going with our year-to-date forecast, and we'll be updating that and give you a more current version at the February meeting.
I'm going to interrupt here and...
Sure.
And ask, because we have a new board member, would you step back to the top? Because I know this is how I felt my first board meeting.
Okay.
And I was looking over the forecast comparison. Could you give a quick explanation of the words under the revenue sources?
The various categories here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there are six listed, well, six listed there. If you could give a quick explanation for Mrs. Ennis, that would, that'd be great.
I certainly will. Property taxes are the real estate taxes that are collected from both businesses and individual property owners in the district. Personal property tax, that had formerly been on businesses, based on their inventory, things like that, equipment. The estimate is zero right now, because the law has phased that out. Sometimes in our spring settlements, we'll get a little bit of delinquencies that have been collected just in the last, if this, if we don't get any this year, it would be the first year that we haven't. But the amount tends to be smaller and smaller each year, and it's very hard to predict what that will be. So eventually, probably in a couple of years, that line will, the state won't even have that line on the forecast anymore. The third one down, unrestricted grants and aid, and for that, we're estimating four-point-three million dollars for the year. That's what's called, where, when you hear us talk about our state foundation funding, our school funding, our per pupil allocations, that is in that category. Restricted grants and aid, fourteen thousand dollars is what is estimated this year. That is funding for a couple of areas. One of them is vocational and technical-weighted funding that we receive from the state, and additionally, we are going to receive a small allocation, about six thousand dollars, from the federal government, that are some of the excess Ed jobs money that was part of the stimulus package last year. Property tax allowance, the, next to the last line in that section with the estimate of two-point-six million dollars. For residential property owners, they receive a rollback and an exemption that amounts to about fifteen percent of their property tax bill that would be due, and that is reimbursed from the state. That comes into that area in that line item. We also receive some reimbursements that are being phased out, but for reimbursement of those lost personal property taxes that we once received, as well as for electrical deregulation that costs some local revenue to districts. So all of those things are combined into that area, and that's an area where the best summary would be it's that the state is replacing local revenue in that particular line item. All other revenue, the largest contributor to that single item, and that's just a little over a million dollars, is our open enrollment revenue that we receive from other districts for students who attend here. Our investment earnings, which are not quite what they were, once were, and any fees, fees that come into the general fund are included in that category, as well as any services that we might provide to other school districts or governmental agencies. And other revenue sources, which is in this, just the small second section, three hundred thousand dollars, those are, for example, repayment of an advance to other funds if we receive a payment that was actually from the prior year, but doesn't come till July first, it's going to fall into that category as well. So our total income that we're estimating is twenty-two million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars. And that is just our operating budget. That does include, in most cases, grants, student activities, food service, various restricted amounts, scholarships, things like that. And I'm assuming you're going to want me to give a similar summary on the expense categories, or are those...
Well, those, I'm going to judge based on past conversation, the wording of those is somewhat self-explanatory.
Yes, much more so.
So I don't think it's necessary. I would only add that, overall, we just recently had communication of the final wrap-up summary with the auditor.
Correct.
You were going to schedule that final meeting, and...
And I need to do that yet.
And all I'm leading up to is, if, if rather than my time to be in on that, although if I'm available, I will, if Mrs. Ennis' time, if you coordinate with her, and she could sit in, there's a whole education that comes early on when sitting through that audit discussion.
Absolutely. Okay, great, yeah, great, great. And what Mr. Jordan is referring to...
And quite frankly, I don't know if others have ever sat in on that, that annual closing meeting with the auditor, but two board members can be there with it, not constituting the meeting, so whoever else would like to be a part of it, if you can handle that communication, set the date and see who can attend.
Very well.
Okay.
And then we can have a report after that time. I can tell you that it's all, it's all good news again, so that's...
I just had one question on the forecast, which I think I know the answer to, but I'm going to ask anyway, though. Looks like just over a half a million dollars in property tax allowance that we're waiting for a payment from the state. Is that what I see?
That was, that was on the month-to-date, and what happened was, there was one of the reimbursements that actually came in November that I had originally timed for December. So if we look at the year-to-date column...
Oh, it came back.
We're, we're very, very close. We're within about eleven hundred dollars of the estimate. It was just a timing of, I had timed it to come in early December, and it came late November.
So you're not really, you're not really waiting for the money there?
No, no.
Okay.
Yes.
The other thing I would like to add, and I'll, rather than ask you to explain it, I'll say it. If you look down at the bottom, where it says ending cash balance, and you go to the right, you see the word encumbered. Mrs. Hendricks used the term outstanding purchase orders, and she made reference to that number. The other terminology is encumbered. The word encumbered will show up on these reports, but it's outstanding.
She's got a husband CPA, so she's going to know this stuff better than any other.
Semantics change everywhere.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mrs. Hendricks? Okay, the next item under reports, B, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Pemben.
This month is School Board Recognition Month, so, Mrs. Ennis, you came at a good time. You have a box of chocolate at your desk, along with all the other board members, and we just want to thank you for your time and your effort, and I'll repeat this, as I've said many times, I don't believe that the public understands how much time and effort goes into what a board does. Many evenings, weekends are spent by board members discussing board business, and the community's lucky to have a board that cares as much as this board. And I know, Mrs. Ennis, you joined recently, but I think that this board, before you came on, was courageous to make a lot of decisions, and I'm sure that now you're joining them, that you'll continue along with that as well. I think that we went ahead with a lot of initiatives, and we've stepped out on a lot of things that I think are very big and we're moving. And I think that the idea is to continue moving with this type of board that we have here, so I thank you, and I know that it's not always easy. I know that sometimes we challenge each other, and we've had some healthy discussions at times, but it's good, and so thank you. We appreciate it. Another item that's not on here that I'd like to bring up is that I put a document out to you, and I'm just going to give it to you now in its revised form. If you just take a look at it, and I'll be talking, I can be sending you emails, it's, this is the cyber citizenship document that I sent you a draft on and asked you to make some comments on, but I've made some changes. Amy and I attended a seminar with John Britton and a whole lot of superintendents and various other personnel this weekend, and this was the first time that this document that we've drafted was rolled out. We haven't discussed it with the staff yet, we will, but what it is, is a pledge, and we're going to continue to revise this along with the staff, the students, and I'm asking if you have any ideas along with this, to send them to me, and we'd like to include them in the document, but we already made some corrections to this and tightened it up. We do believe that it's one of the first of its kind in the nation, actually, to pledge. It's similar to a pledge that is like a prom pledge, so to speak, and having these computers in our school, being in this society that we're in now, we're aware of so many opportunities for students to bully, so to speak, and now cyberbully. And so we believe that we need to take a stand with this type of behavior. And it's a real challenge when these students have these devices in their hands. And so we believe that this pledge is a beginning. We don't think it's the end. We have to consider what we have in our present policy. We have to consider whether we want to put some more teeth into this by making a three-strike policy, possibly. Those discussions need to continue. And so I'm open for ideas, if you want to email me, that would be great. If you want to talk a little bit about it now, that's fine, but I just wanted to pass the second draft out to you. We are going to go public with this as soon as possible, though, because we believe that it's the right thing to do, and like I said, I think it is one of the first in the nation that's out there.
It's a great idea.
Excellent. I want to point out that you just mentioned and emphasized cyberbullying, but the document is far more encompassing than just the concept of cyberbullying. It's very complete.
First time I ever saw this, but I'll comment right now, number four really jumps out at me. Looks like the first sentence up to the paragraph shouldn't even be in there, unless otherwise authorized. Seems like that might be a day when somebody authorizes you to take an inappropriate picture, so I would say...
Yeah.
Even if you're authorized, I wouldn't want to be doing it.
That's a good point. I toyed around with this a little bit too much today, so, and I was in a hurry, so obviously that's a mistake. I'll fix that. Thank you.
Do we need to add a parent signature line on there?
Yeah, we, we talked about that a little bit, too. I think that that would be good.
I find, I find seven kind of interesting. Just the fact that you're asking them, when you do come across this stuff, to report it, your pledging to report any inappropriate behavior.
Yeah, we had another one in here that said that we wouldn't tolerate that type of behavior and didn't expect it, that we crossed out altogether. After listening to the group that was there on Saturday, we felt that it was unenforceable and too difficult to, just the way the statement read, I gave it to you in your first draft, I should have brought that one with me, but...
You know, the one Dave pointed out, we have a procedure in place, maybe an anonymous procedure for the kids to report violations?
That can be done...
We have the online procedure, that they can report any type of misbehavior or... We have the online procedure that they can report any type of misbehavior or-
Or by phone also.
Yeah, good.
It's almost all like you're guilty if you don't report it, just the way that's written. You're pledging to report it. If you don't report it, you made a pledge to.
Yeah, and it does, it does, it does, it does, could be interpreted that that's implied.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So you're in violation of this contract just by not reporting.
So, so how do we tie this in with the use of the laptops? Do we mandate this needs to be signed before you're issued a laptop? How, what if I say I'm not signing this?
Right now, the way it's written, it's not mandatory, it's not binding, but we could have the ability to make it mandatory and binding if we choose to. And that's got to be part of the discussion. That's why I'm bringing it out to you to see whether or not, what your thoughts are about doing that. We discussed that at our meeting, and that was-
I'd like to look into what it would take to make it binding.
Well, number six, number six is a line about the district internet acceptable use policy and guidelines that is something they sign when getting the, the laptop. To incorporate this and tie them together for that signature would complete that issue. Suggest.
And I don't know, just thinking, and I agree with you, Dale, that it should be some that's binding when they are using a district computer. And I'd hope, again, looking at a little bit into number four, you know, that they're not going to take inappropriate photographs or videos during the course of the school day or on property. I don't know if we can do it, but I'd like to say, if you're using that computer, you better not be doing it anytime, you know, at home, on vacation, wherever. I mean, it just wouldn't be tolerated. I'd hope we could put something in there that's strong.
What's, what, okay, that's no problem to write that in a way that we can expand the statement. What, are we unanimous to think that this should be mandatory? What's your thoughts?
I would look into the legalities of it.
It is, so I, I already have asked, it can be.
I guess I'd like to hear why, why we wouldn't want it to be. I can't think of a reason why we wouldn't want it to be. You know, if they're using a piece-
So are we looking at any lawsuits on the First Amendment?
Well, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, like number seven, you know, would be one that could-
Well, I'd say let's have our attorneys visit it and say, you know, make it as something that we can't-
Now that we made a few changes, now that we've talked with him and the group of people that were at that meeting, I didn't have time today to discuss it with him, but I will talk with him tomorrow. We, we want to move on this.
That's exactly right. So don't hold up, you know, getting through, you know, if, if the first step is just making the kids aware of signing this, making a pledge, and if that, we can make that happen immediately, I'm all for that, and then over the next year, try and make all this stuff policy.
If you can make it policy right away, then I'll, I'll ask them what that takes, and I'll let you know.
What about expanding this to anybody using system, district technology? Not only students?
It's kind of hard not to.
Sure.
I mean, you know.
Yeah. I think this is, I think from past discussions, this is something we've kicked around and we've, we've-
It's funny.
We've talked about, and here we are-
The kids are showing here for speech and debate that are going to be using our, you know, infrastructure. I mean, they should sign this.
Yeah, everything that's in here is really for the protection of the staff as well. There's not anything in here that I don't think that the staff would have issues with, but I can, I'll give the document to the VTA, because as I said, I haven't gotten a chance to do that yet. We haven't discussed this at all, but they need to look at it.
Yeah.
They'll need to study it, and we'll need to have a discussion.
I, I, as you glanced around the table, I think you've got this support. You follow through your steps and bring it back at next month's meeting. I think-
I'll bring it back to you complete.
Think the group's ready to.
I, I know what we need to do, and we'll go as far as we need to. And we're going to go ahead with it, because I think that it's just something that can't wait and shouldn't wait, so I, I will go ahead.
Good work.
Do it. Nice job.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you.
Just, you know, something else to mention along with that, just so you also know, we got it, that's related to this, we've got a exercise that's coming up at the high school. We've got two things. We haven't yet done the Facebook in-service, because the gentleman that was coming out from LCCC could not make it, he was ill last week, he's coming out this week, so that will be completed. But we're also doing something that's related to this, that's of the bullying nature, and that's Rachel's challenge. I don't know if any of you have heard of it or not, but if you get a chance to go online, I believe that the student was a 911 person that was involved during that time period that has a story to tell, and, and her family got involved and is now, she's, I believe, a student that actually committed suicide at one point. And so, very interesting story that now they take this challenge out to all school students to attempt our, in our best way to end bullying. So we are going to be participating in that at the high school.
This has been on the national news, this-
Yeah, that particular challenge.
What's on the 11th, on the agenda for the high school? I saw there was a Facebook breakout, is that what it is?
That's, no, that's the one that we didn't get a chance to finish, on the 11th.
Okay.
With Rachel's challenge, I'm not sure if I've got the date.
It's in March. I think it's in, I think it's in March.
Okay.
That paperwork has started to come across.
All right. I'm not sure when we were able to finalize it, but I'll, I'll be giving you more information as that comes along. But it does relate to this document and to bullying, so I wanted to bring it up, let you know that we will be participating in that, and it's been well-received across the nation, as Dave said.
So the 11th date that you saw on the school calendar is Paul Heronimus coming to do-
Correct, and that's the Facebook presentation to the students.
And that's during the school day?
Correct. That's all I have.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item nine. This is the consent agenda. Is there anything on there inclusive of the addendum that you should have at your page, at your seat? Is there anything on there that any board member would like pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, item M, that's on, that's on the addendum tonight, just so you can get a little bit of an explanation. Mrs. Hendricks, it's something that just came to me.
Okay.
What, L, weren't there some strings attached to it last year? Were concerned about transportation and things like that?
Let's pull it.
Go ahead and talk about it.
Anything else?
I'll move that we accept and approve the consent agenda, including the addendum as published. I'll second.
Okay. Hendricks, please call the roll.
Mr. Rini?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item 10 is to review the items removed, and we'll start with item L.
I know we had some extensive conversations with Rachel about transportation, what it gets concerned with. I think we approved it last year, but, so how are they getting back and forth to-
It's, it's, last year, it, there was a bus, and the way it worked is the cost was to be prorated by the students that participated.
I've not been approached by-
There was also some question about whether it was truly a school sanctioned event. Last year, we debated that at length.
No, that was the, the event in Akron, Ohio that we debated. It was an indoor track meet that took place in Akron. That wasn't a state, that was the one we had the discussion about. It was the indoor track meet.
So what's their plan?
I'm not sure with this one, because this is not an Ohio High School Athletic Association event.
Which they don't have for indoor track.
So-
So this is a non-scholastic.
They're calling it the same thing, indoor state track championship, so-
I can't remember the reasoning behind it, but I know that this is something that we've done nearly every year.
Right. So why would they, why would they need our recognition?
And I know last year was called into question.
Why would they need our support on it?
Trying to remember.
Is it insurance?
I believe that might, I was thinking liability.
That's what I thought it was. Bottom line was, we had to sanction that for that reason.
Because it's not an OHSAA sanctioned event, and covered by that.
So if they're hurt while participating, they're covered, but what about transportation? Because they all went down in cars last year.
Well, there was an approval in the organizational meeting about-
Transportation.
About transportation.
Yes, this is a club like any other club, I mean, just because it's not-
So this would be approved under that? Okay, that's fine. I, I know these kids have put in a lot of work with these-
Yeah, I want to see them go out.
Indoor track, so with it, I mean, they're working out weekly right now, and I think Dave Demakis is one of the people that is kind of running this, so, yeah, I mean, okay.
I think we're all in favor of them going, and just make sure we're not sticking our neck out, make sure transportation's covered, it's safe and-
Exactly.
Properly supervised.
And we're going to pay for transportation as part of this, correct?
The way that this is structured, they have not requested a bus. There may have been a reason why the one year that they did, but they've not requested it.
And we didn't, we didn't last year, to the best of my recollection, we did not approve it as far as transportation last year.
And when is it? Do we know?
I haven't spoke with Ralph about this at all.
It's, it's before the February meeting, and that's why it ended up on the, why, on the addendum, I do know that.
Amy and I can go and speak with Ralph tomorrow. I, I have not heard anything about this at all.
As, as it's written, we're approving it from the standpoint of sanctioning the participation for the sake of school liability, but we're not sanctioning any funding for the participation. That's the way the resolution is written.
I'd make a motion, we approve it as stated.
I will second.
We'll send you an email, though, and report out what the details are.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Rini?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item pulled was M, authorize the treasurer to establish Sailor Support Fund 018-902P to account for specific local revenue sources other than taxes that are restricted to expenditures for assistance to students with unusual hardship and pain for various fees or items related to their educational experience that may be, may include but are not limited to curricular and extracurricular programs. Requests for funding shall be submitted in writing and approved by at least three of the following superintendent, assistant superintendent, treasurer, or building principal.
I'll move.
I will second. You requested this pulled for explanation.
Yeah, just so to note.
Sure. We have had interest in the last year or so, as families have had hardships to find a mechanism to provide funding for them for various school trips, for pay to participate, for other activities as, as they have, have came up, and haven't had a real structured way to do that. And the thought of establishing this fund to track this was facilitated right now by an idea that came from Kathy Monroe, who does our cell pho, the secretary that handles district cell phones, and was, we've had a, a cycle of those turned in and have sent those in for recycling, and, and it's a pretty lucrative recycling process or source of revenue. And she shared some of the information, she said, we could put a collection point in each of the buildings and probably very easily collect $1,500 from those old cell phones that, that come in. And we were talking about what to do with, what we would do with that money, different things like that, spoke to Phil about it, and the one that seemed to really catch favor with the most individuals was something like this, to have a support fund of this nature in place. That may not end up being, going forward, the sole source of revenue that goes into that. It would always be open for donations that organizations or individuals could make. We may come across other opportunities going forward where there may be some fundraising that could happen. I know we had looked at one time at a vendor who was doing advertising on district webpages, and their business has grown significantly in the region. It, it could be that that, if we would go with something like that, those revenues may, the board may wish to direct those to that to provide for these things. And I wanted to have a mechanism in place, a fund that we could track it, so we had it to do, and I also wanted to have some type of a procedure in place so that we could track, and submitted in writing, may not even be from a family member or a student who may be too proud to do that, even though they have a need. It could be a staff member who makes that request because they, or a community member because they know about the need. But to have, and then also to have the accountability there, that there was some sort of a, a review process, that no single individual was just making all of those decisions. My role would probably primarily be, do we have enough money in the fund to pay for whatever's being requested? But that the building principal is aware, so people knew which, the people in the position to know which students have legitimate needs, was part of the rationale behind that. So I hope it'll turn out to be a good thing and be able to help some families down the road in various, various ways.
When we, at the onset of the reinvention plan, when we incorporated pay to participate, and when we talked about the computer fees, when we went through all that dialogue, everybody remembers, except for Mrs. Ennis knew, we had extensive dialogue about the mechanisms. And we encouraged that, but, but now you thankfully are formalizing it for a standardized method.
Excellent.
So, that's good.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Rini?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the date and location of upcoming board meetings. We have the next three regular meetings listed here. And I will start by saying, looking at everyone's calendar, are those three dates still good for everyone?
As I said, we talked before that April 19th is not a Monday, correct?
Yes, yes, we did.
Was that on purpose?
Um, well, coincidentally, coincidentally, it was, it was one that Shelley caught and pointed out to me, and I looked at it and said, I had a note in my computer to remember when we got to this date, to change that date, because I'm going to be out of town the, the week of the regularly scheduled meeting. I never told anybody, and it just was put on here that way. So that is not, that particular date is a change from that-
Monday, 16th.
Regular schedule that we set in the organizational meeting.
To a Thursday. So we are staying with April 19th?
We're on spring break, the 9th through the 13th, and we get back from break on the 16th.
I, I think that we're spring break the week before that.
Is that right?
I'm pretty sure.
I thought so, but I'm not sure.
I don't think the 9th through 13th is our spring break. I don't think. I did not check it, and quite frankly, it was-
So you're not having it on Monday because you can't make it, is that what you're, you just-
The regular, the regular date, I definitely cannot be there.
It would have been the 9th, right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's where, I've got the 19th.
Those three dates look good for everyone else?
I'm going to have to check my calendar, I'm just thinking, that may be the start of the- I'm just thinking, that may be the start of the school business officials workshop in Columbus, and that first evening, if we get to that, it always helps us meet our investment training requirement. So, I'll have to look at the training calendar and see what other opportunities they might have through the course of the year.
But, but February and March look good for everybody right now. We keep those as is. Last year, we added, throughout the year, we, we had left a standing meeting date of the fourth Monday of every month. It was written into every agenda, and when we got near the end of the year, we weren't using it. I don't think it has to be formalized. We've had some discussion on the technicality of how to utilize a second meeting as a regular or a special meeting. And if it's okay with everyone, we will just always say, attempt to keep your, your fourth Monday of every month open in the event we have a common date when we need a special If everyone wants to go back to the way we did it last year, we can. I'm just recommending that.
All right, now it's not looking like we need the one on the 23rd, or any feeling on that?
Well, as of this moment, I don't, I don't see anything that came up that requires that extra meeting this month, other than, let's step back and say, in discussion items, when we talked about a board workshop, I would like to now, at this point, try and look at calendars and set a date for that. Now that I'm saying that...
Are you looking in January?
I would say the end of January, beginning of February is, would be the timing that we could get Matt Markling to schedule for us.
Are we looking for a Saturday?
And I, and I would recommend a Saturday morning.
Phil and I are going to be at the Ashland Leadership Academy in Cuyahoga Falls that day.
February 4th? I know that day doesn't work for myself. I, I have a full weekend rotary conference.
You can't do the 11th?
I can't either.
28th too soon?
28th works for me.
Spring break, by the way, is April 2nd through 6th.
My battery's going dead, and I'm, I'm waiting for the thing to reboot, so I can...
We can email about it.
The 8th or the 18th of February, we'd be up to...
Did I, did I hear everybody say the last Saturday?
28th.
The 28th? Looked good.
Wonder if we'd be able to get it lined up that quick.
We will try. That day does work for me. Saturday, the 28th, worked for everybody? If so, then I will immediately tomorrow contact Matt Markling and see if the date works for him. And we will inform everybody that we will, right now, let's set the date for a workshop, and if we realize we cannot get him for that date and we can't organize it that fast, then, then we can...
Shooting to start like at 8:00 or 9:00? I mean, is that...
7:30?
I love early. I'm always afraid to say that early.
You want to start early, so we'll start at noon?
Yeah, so we'll finish.
Early's a relative term, so, but 7:30 is fine.
You know, if we did like 7:30 or 8:00 to 12:00 or something, you know...
Any preference?
7:00 AM?
Are you an early riser, Shelley?
It's fine, it's fine.
I'll do it, I'll start from 7:00, whatever's convenient for anybody.
7:00.
Okay, we'll say 7:00 AM. Okay? And we'll see what, what I hear back.
We'll contact him.
The weather may be bad for somebody driving, driving west like at 7:00 in the morning.
I'm a guy that sets up 5:50 AM with the first tee time I can get on a Sunday morning, so, or Saturday morning, and I'll call on Sundays, but Saturday.
Okay, we're going to set that date. January 28th, 7:00 AM is a special meeting.
Brilliant, so board retreat, right, or...
It would still be considered a special meeting, though.
Why were we talking about that? We call it a special meeting, and I know, I was in the OSBA conference, had a, one of the sessions, and this, a special meeting, there's some different rules that apply as far as notifying the media and so forth. And when we know this far in advance, it doesn't seem like those would apply.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
Correct.
That's the only reason I'm saying the word, special.
And sometimes special ends up being what's considered an emergency meeting, and there are special...
Rules, that's...
Right, there are some different exemptions to the notification requirements for those, you're right.
Okay. Meeting dates are set. The next item, 12, recommend resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Reenie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have 8:44.
Oh, sorry.